It's seven oh five P M and I call this meeting of the Elgin Independent School District to order. I'd like to announce that there is a quorum of the board present that this meeting has been posted and duly called in the time and manner required by law. Next item this time will have the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Linda Tamez, Principal of Booker T. Washington Elementary School. She will introduce the students to lead our pledge tonight.
Good evening, President Mitchell, Dr. Ritter, and school board members. I am Ms. Tamez, proud principal of Booker T. Washington Elementary School. And tonight we have Jamir Green, Anita Cooper, and Edna Tamez, all students at BTW. And they're going to recite the pledge of allegiance with us.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is public comment. Before we begin, I will remind our audience members of the board's procedure for handling public comment. A public comment portion of our meeting is available to members of the public who wish to address an item on tonight's agenda. Anyone who wishes to speak during public comment must sign in prior to the start of the meeting and list the agenda item they want to discuss. Each public comment speaker will be allowed a maximum of five minutes to address the board. Any public testimony speakers who require a translator will receive up to ten minutes to address the board. The public comment portion of the meeting will allow all speakers who have signed up before the start of the meeting to address the board regarding any item on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments and criticisms civil and courteous. Please also avoid using profanity and refrain from making personal attacks on others during their opportunity to speak. Last, we ask that you not discuss students who are not your own child. If a speaker is seeking board resolution of a specific complaint, that concern should be addressed through the district grievance process. District Policy DGVA has been established for addressing employee complaints. Policy FNG is the avenue for filing parental complaints. And Policy GF addresses community members' complaints. Grievance forms can be obtained in any campus administration office or in the central administration office. Mrs. Wilson will be the timekeeper. So tonight we have Philip Thomas. You may approach the podium.
Thank you. My name is Philip Thomas. I'm pastor of Journey Church here in Elgin. And first, just like to thank you for all that you do for our community and for our students. It's just a vital role that is that is played, and I know it's not an easy, easy role or an easy job. Today, I would, if you'd grant me the permission to talk about something, it's not a specific agenda item, but it is a recent law that has been passed about the Ten Commandments being placed in public schools. If those are provided to the schools. This is a very difficult subject, and I know we live in a very divisive time where everything has become politicized and divisive, and there is going to be passionate arguments on both sides regarding this new law. I can actually understand and probably agree with arguments on both sides. However, one thing that I know that is very clear is the principles that are portrayed in the Ten Commandments are vital to understanding the founding of our country and are vital to a society as a whole. Not that this society is required to follow and believe the God who inspired those Ten Commandments, but the principles, principles behind them are ingrained in our foundation. And I do not believe that a full and honest teaching of American history can be divorced from the influence of those biblical principles. In fact, as you look at the founders and the things that they wrote about the founding of this country, the one document that was quoted most often was the Bible. We just did the pledge of allegiance that does say, "Under God," it also proclaims liberty. The Liberty Bell, the inscription on the Liberty Bell is from the Book of Leviticus. It is straight out of, out of the Bible. John Quincy Adams, who I believe was the sixth president, served under four presidents. He's, he quoted this in a letters to his son. He said, "The law given from Sinai was a civil and municipal as well as moral and religious code. It contained many statutes of universal application, laws essential to the existence of man in society, and most of which have been enacted in every nation whichever professed any code of laws. Vain indeed would be the search among the writings of profane antiquity to find so broad, so complete, and so solid a base for morality as the Decalogue lays down." We would like to, as a church, provide a copy of the Ten Commandments as presented in the new state law to each classroom in the Elgin School District. I would, I'll be reaching out to the principals to see the best way to go about doing that. I also, I, I believe it's important to understand the principles behind these and how they influence our country. It starts off with, "Have no other gods." Well, our Declaration of Independence specifically says, "We are endowed by our Creator with certain unalienable rights." Without at least a belief of something greater than ourselves, that does not happen. Government does not give rights. God gives rights. That is, that was a founding principle of our country. Have no other idols is important that we recognize that we do not try to become God and create God. In fact, most governments throughout history have taken the place of God. That's what our founders were rebelling against by creating a government of we, the people, rather than the government, government being sovereign, the people were sovereign. The, the third commandment is honor the God's name. Do not take God's name in vain. Religion and faith and God should never be used to manipulate or to force people into, into believing something that they don't believe. That actually, I think, is a basis for religious freedom in our country. That even though we were founded on biblical principles, yes, you are not required to believe those principles exactly as other Christians and other people do. And in fact, you can have a completely different faith and you can enjoy the freedoms of this country. Also, honor the Sabbath day. This is actually one where those laws were codified at one time in our country. I do not think we should necessarily go back to that. However, this is an important principle of recognizing that there is more to life than just work, than just trying to, to earn income. There's more to life than that. Honor your parents. This is the, the principle of family of that is an important foundational principle to any society. And our, our country was founded on those, that, that important principle. Do not murder. All life is precious. There can be no intentional taking of innocent life. That is a foundational principle. Do not commit adultery. Goes again to the importance of family. We see the devastation that this brings. This does not, we know that marriage, not all marriages will, will last, but that should be a principle that we strive to uphold. Do not steal. That institutes the importance of private property and the, that, that you can own things. That set America apart from any other country in the world. Do not perjure yourself. Honesty. Oh, if we could see a little bit of that from any of our public leaders. And the last one is do not covet. Do not set yourself up to aspiring to, to look at what others have, but focus on yourself.
Thank you. We are at five minutes.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
No, sir. We cannot allow that. Thank you. No, sir. No, sir. Thank you. All right. Next item, being asked to approve the minutes of the July twenty first board workshop and regular meetings. Is there a motion to approve those?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from last board meeting.
Motion by Mrs. Reese.
A second.
Second by Mrs. Wilson. Any questions? All in favor of said motion, please raise your hand. Any imposers? I'm sorry. Motion passes. Seven oh. Thank you. Next item, we have recognition. It's Rick Reyes, Executive Director of School Leadership and Campus Support.
Good evening, President Mitchell, Superintendent Ritter, and members of the board. I am Rick Reyes, Executive Director of School Leadership. I am filling in for Al Rodriguez this evening. This evening, we have three recognitions to share with you, and to begin, we have Mrs. Keller, who will present a special recognition in fine arts.
Good evening, President Mitchell, Dr. Ritter, School Board members of trustees. My name is Allison Keller. I'm the Director of Fine Arts and Advanced Academics. And tonight, it is my absolute pleasure to recognize some of our visual arts teachers. This past July, Texas Art Education released the recipients of the coveted District of Distinction Award. For the 2025 award, over 12,000 districts were eligible. Each district submitted documentation to allow a rigorous fourteen-point rubric over this past school year. Of those 1,200 districts, only 109 met the high criteria and were receiving this honor. And we are one of those 109, making us in the top eight percent of visual arts education in the state. It's an even smaller percentage when you take the small schools under 10,000 students. Even smaller percentage of those were awarded this honor. We are thrilled to be named a 2025 District of Distinction, which marks our second consecutive year earning this honor. This award is a testament to our visual arts teachers, district-wide kindergarten through twelfth, who are dedicated to help guide each student reach their highest potential in creativity and self-expression. Their vision for what is possible for our students is endless, and they work tirelessly to seek out lessons and experiences which afford our students every opportunity to engage in the arts in a meaningful way. I am so honored to introduce some of our visual arts teachers tonight. Ladies, if you'd like to come up. First, we have Ms. Jennifer Grimes from Nyadig Elementary School. Mrs. Ashley Smith, Elgin Elementary School. And Ms. Eileen Galvan, Elgin Middle School. Please give them a warm round of applause. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. Elgin ISD is proud to celebrate Ms. Marissa Marcel, our Elementary Teacher of the Year, who was honored as one of the top three teachers in Region Thirteen at their Teacher of the Year luncheon. In historic competition separated by just one point, Ms. Marcel was one of the three finalists who received this rare recognition. Ms. Marcel serves as our GT teacher of Elgin Elementary and is now also serving our Trinity Ranch campus. Ms. Marcel, Ms. Marcel's passion, creativity, and commitment to students continuing, continue to inspire our entire community. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Marissa Marcel. Thank you, Ms. Marcel. And last, but certainly not least, in 2018, the Texas Elementary Principals and Supervision Association, which we know as TEPSA, established the TEPSA Student Leadership Award to honor outstanding student leadership teams and their impact on school communities in the state of Texas. It is with great pride that we announced that Harvest Ridge Elementary School Student Council met all the standards to receive this prestigious award. The HRE Student Council was recognized on TEPSA's website and in a video presentation during the TEPSA Summer Conference keynote on June eleventh, with a trophy to be presented at a future Leadership R Us workshop. Please welcome Ms. Worley, HRE Campus Principal, who will introduce members of the HRE Student Council.
Good evening, President Mitchell, Dr. Ritter, and Elgin ISD School Board. My name is Megan Worley, and I'm the Principal of Harvest Ridge Elementary School. We have two officers from the HRE 2024-2025 Student Council who were able to attend this evening's meeting. President Haven Thorndike and historian Tristan Modestet. We look forward to continued success for our Student Council this year, beginning with Student Council elections in September. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Worley and HRE Student Council. This concludes our recognitions for the evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Next item, superintendent's report.
Thank you. And first of all, I would like to do a quick introduction. She's taking a picture of her here, but I will go ahead and start talking about her. Just introduce someone. I have her turn around and wave. And we have our new communications coordinator who is joining us for her first board meeting, Ms. Emily White. Emily comes to us from Sunnyvale ISD, and her husband serves as CFO in Bastrop ISD. And we, we have history with our districts working on T-PAC together, the Texas Public Accountability Consortium, and through TASSA. And so we were so excited when Emily reached out and I had some superintendent colleagues to say, "You may not even realize that you have this person who they're moving to the area and she's, she's interested." And it just worked out perfectly. And so far, she is, we're so happy to have her. And so, welcome to Elgin ISD, Emily. We're happy to have you. Thank you. She didn't know I was going to do that. Oh, right. Oh, my goodness. My most favorite time of year, the beginning of school. It is so full of new beginnings and excitement. And boy, have we been celebrating in Elgin ISD. We started off, we have convocation. And this was, get ready, y'all. It's our last year to have convocation in Bastrop ISD at their pack because we're going to be in our auditorium. And we had over a thousand people, staff and students there in the pack there in Bastrop ISD to celebrate the beginning of the school year. And it was just, it was fabulous. We have lots of students. We want to pull kids in and teachers. We did the parade of campuses and departments. And we had a student interview about a student telling a time that she had faced a challenge and that really depended on others and her school family to help build her up. Our theme this year is, "We're all in this together." And we really do feel that we are all in this together. And it was a great, great day. We had an incredible video that we had filmed prior to, and that's always a great team building experience for us as we do that and we work with the students to do that. And Alexis Monet in Elgin actually does that filming of the video. Hopefully, some of you have seen it. It's out there and it'll be on our website if it's not already. And lots of great pictures and lots of things. The student activities, I can't say enough about. We really wore our kids out this summer, I think, like with band. And I know, Tanisha, your son is in the band, so you got, you, you know exactly what I'm talking about, right? Yeah, you were taking him everywhere. Chair, purple diamonds. And we had our theater kids. We had our choir and just every group of students. It was just amazing and fun. And athletes, all of our athletes, a bunch of them were there too. So just an opportunity to celebrate kids and we are all in this together about doing what is best for our students. All right. Next, meet the Wildcats. So on the same day as convocation, we count convocation in the morning, meet the Wildcats in the evening, and we were at Elgin High School in the gym. And it just, the, the event gets bigger and bigger. And we really want to thank our Chamber of Commerce for helping and our Elgin Foundation for helping. And we had our education foundation. We had, they supplied, I know, we had hot dogs for the kids and drinks and, and fed the athletes and the families. And it was just a great night of celebration and introduction to our students and our student athletes who, here we go. We're gonna, I encourage you to get out and come watch our kids because they're amazing. We have new coach Lucero, who is our new football coach, head football coach. And he, he is really all about excelling in the classroom and on the field or whatever sport it is that our kids are participating in. So we love to hear that message. Her band was there, cheer, purple diamonds. Again, it was just a super night and we thank anyone who came. It was lots of fun to get to celebrate our students. All right, Trinity Ranch Elementary Ribbon Cutting. We were excited to get to open Trinity Ranch Elementary and as our brand new elementary school opening this school year. Such a great turnout for that. And we were able to celebrate the staff. And Dr. Martinez, Arthur Martinez is our, Dr. Martinez, great job. He's done a wonderful job. Getting that school ready to go. And it just was amazing and beautiful. We did tours of the campus that evening. Able to walk through and show people who came to our ribbon cutting the campus and just how amazing and warm and wonderful it is. And then that same day, we opened up the doors to meet the teacher. And so those people were, they were all standing outside, ready to come in. And we had our first little kiddos coming in and meeting their teachers and seeing their classrooms. So thank you to board members who were there as well and had that wonderful ribbon cutting for Trinity Ranch. All right. And then meet the teacher. We did that at all of our campuses. And our students and parents were able to come in and meet their teachers at every level. It was such a great success. I know on that elementary night, I, I couldn't even believe part blocks down from the schools to be able to get in and come and see. But so many, just so many excited people and so many happy people. And the teachers had everything so ready and prepared. And I know, because I am a mom of a first-year teacher this year, she just put her own classroom together in friendship ISD, and she's teaching. And I'm telling you what, those teachers put in the time and the effort and their own dollars to help just make those rooms look beautiful. For those kids, it's so sweet. So I want to give our teachers a round of applause because they just have. And our principals, thank you for supporting them and just making these campuses be the most amazing, wonderful places they can be. It's been phenomenal. And then we have the start of school. So we are on day four today, and the first day and every day has been amazing. We had the smoothest start of school that I know that I, in my entire career, have ever had. And that all of us on cabinet were saying the same thing. Thank you, principals. I cannot say enough to y'all about that, as well as transportation, maintenance, custodial, child nutrition, all of the departments that help pull this together. We are all in this together, and it takes all of us. It takes the village to make it happen. And boy, we pulled it off. Not only did we pull it off, kids were safe. They were happy. And we get them to school, we get them fed, we get them home. And we did it. And so it's been, it's been wonderful and it continues to be wonderful. And when you have great people in place, great things happen. So just some great pictures of start of school, really, really happy, happy children and families and staff. So thank you for a great start of school, everyone. Stuff the bus. And this was our, our second year to do this at Millie's. We did it last week. And gather school supplies from the community. And gathered school supplies from the community at Millie's, and that was another fun evening. And so we thank the Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring this and for all of the businesses who also provided support for this and for Stuff the Bus. And it was another great beginning-of-school event that has become tradition for us. So lots of fun and just lots of opportunity to celebrate what it's all about, and it is about our kids. First-day enrollment was 5,828. August 18th enrollment is 6,112. But they're still coming, and we love it, and we're so excited. And we continue to register students, and they are coming in, and you couldn't be happier. So we love seeing them, and we love welcoming all these new kiddos to our district. And being a fast-growth district, we know that we have many more to come. So we have great things in place and very, very proud to be the Superintendent at Elgin ISD. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ritter, for that report. Next item, we'll have the President's Report. I have a couple of items to talk about. The first one will talk about board member committee participation. We've had this in past years, and some of you have served on these various committees, and so we're presenting the opportunity again for each of you to serve on a committee. We will send out a list in the weekly update, and you can choose your top two from those committees. Some of those happen to be the District Adviser, Council, the High Quality Staff, Elgin Education Foundation, Safety and Security, Budget and Finance, and Bond Oversight Committee. And so she'll send those out, and if you would please, ma'am, sir, choose your top two and go get you guys going, so some of you excited about serving in those capacities, I'm sure. Thank you. And then secondly, just talk briefly, weekend of July 25th, 27th, Mrs. Reese, Mrs. Wilson, Dr. Ritter, and myself had the opportunity to attend the Holsworth Institute, and I was there, security, keep them in line. It was a wonderful conference. It was the Texas School Board Institute, a lot of learning, a lot of excellent speakers, a lot of networking, and we were able to really just have a real, honest, open communication as it relates to serving on the Board of Trustees and what our duties are and what they are not. And it was really an educational thing. Mrs. Walters, I had attended last year, and so it was just this year, and then next year, we intend to send a different group, but they treated us very well, top-notch facility with top-notch presentations. And so, and as such, I have certificates for these individuals who completed that program. So first, we'll have Mrs. Wilson. And we have Mrs. Reese. Are you good one, too? No, you're not too ready. And then, of course, myself. But we thank you all for the opportunity to go and serve, and it was a pleasure being with you guys for that weekend, and look forward to the big opportunity. Next item we have is the consent agenda. Being asked to approve tax report refunds and adjustments for July 2025, approved financial statement and budget amendment listing for July 2025, approved investment report for July 2025, approved budget amendments, A, approved final budget amendment funds 199, 240, 599, and 2024-25 final amended budget, approved purchases greater than $50,000, A, the summit K through 12 instructional materials, B, age of learning instructional materials, and C, the TASB Risk Management Fund property insurance and workers' compensation coverage. Also being asked to approve the 2025 Certified Values, approve the annual resolution of extracurricular status of 4-H organization and adjunct faculty for Bastrop County, TASB policy updates, a list of alternate appraisals for T-TAS, approve the 2025-26 appraisal calendar, approve the 2025-26 Student Code of Conduct, consideration and action for selection of construction manager at risk for RFP 2026-02 Culinary Program Innovation, consideration and approval of guaranteed maximum price, number one for middle school, number two. And that will conclude the consent agenda items. Are there any questions about the consent agenda?
Yes, I have a question about Levin, the Student Code of Conduct, where we're talking about the personal communications that was by law, we have to do that. But the statement reads, "A student is prohibited from possessing or using a personal communication device on school property during the school day." So does that mean they will not have them in their backpacks or?
So, and I can let Ms. Pernilla speak to this specifically, because she's going to be together. So just so everyone understands, too. So we approve through policy update and a code of conduct. We also will be providing administrative guidance and regulations for implementation to every campus and to parents, and putting out more on social media to understand that. But yes, they can bring them to school, but they have to be put away, call it away for the day. So they're being put away in a backpack somewhere, stored away from them during the school day, which is bell-to-bell during the instructional day.
Yes, so the expectation is that they are away and out of sight, out of sight completely. They need to be turned off, powered off, we shouldn't be able to see them. Certainly, the expectation is not that we're going in and searching for them or looking for them, but if they're out and using them, then they will start getting consequences.
Yeah, I was just concerned about the word possessing or using. Well, using, we understand, but possessing, I mean, their backpacks are in their possession. So they really do have them in possession.
Technically, yes, like.
But just so it's clear, you know, and my concern was, if they can't have them there, period, from their possession, what happens if these kids go for extracurricular activities? You know, they can't go home to get this home or whatever. So, but I just want to make that clear, that we all understand that.
So I think once we, we've already worked on our administrative regs, and so all of that information is detailed, very clear. So just so you know, the students can't have them for extracurricular activities after school. We're just making sure that they don't have them during the instructional day, which is bell-to-bell. So they can have them, they just seem to be put away and out of sight.
Well, I agree. I mean, I'm not disputing it, I can't dispute the legislature, but I just want to make sure that we're all clear and we're on the same page, and we understand it as a board.
Yes, ma'am.
There will be questions to us.
So we will share the details with you guys on what we've created, so that you know what the clear expectations are. But a lot of the things that you're saying are already, we have, we've been working on clarifying that, just waiting to get approval tonight.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so once policy and code of conduct is approved by the board, then the administrative regulations and implementation will put in the weekly to send to all of you to see what everyone's getting on. Yeah, in the weeds about the implementation. It's actually, we actually started the practice with the beginning of the school year. So we're four days in, and I have to say, and I'm just going to have principals like, it's really gone very smoothly. Our campuses, thumbs up, right? Thumbs up. And they've done a great job with communication. Really haven't had that many issues with it. I think first day at school, there were three cell phones at the high school, and the first three days, we're kind of saying, okay, this is happening, put it away. You know, we weren't confiscating them at that time, but now we've started with that. So going well.
Three at the high school, the first day. So it was not at all as big of an issue as we anticipated. I think it was more of an issue for the adults than for the students. And so they, like always, we set expectations, and usually they rise. And so they meet our expectations. We just have to be consistent with implementation and provide them with other opportunities to engage.
Mr. Vega has a question.
I was just going to ask, you know, I was looking at the exceptions on that attachment. How does that work? Is there, has there been many or just a few, or what's the outcome?
Well, right now, I don't know of any exceptions. I don't know of any, and the principals may know, but so I can see some fingers going up, there are a few. And so I, what was that, five? Yeah, okay, so a few, three, one over here. So about a few at every campus, there have been some exceptions, but I haven't heard about those, so I don't think that there have been any issues with those.
You have the question concerning the consent agenda? Not, we'll let it continue motion.
Go move. Second. Hi. Go to the whiz.
Well, he said second.
Not second.
Mrs. Walters, motion by Mrs. Walters, second by Mr. Mons. The questions, all that they were saying motion, please raise your hand. And opposers? Motion passes seven oh. Next, we have some information item. Next scorecard update priority one objectives, 1.1 and 1.2, Dr. Stormy Hickman, Deputy Superintendent.
Good evening, President Mitchell, Dr. Ritter, and members of the board. I am excited to stand before you this evening and give you an update on Priority One from our district scorecard. As a reminder, well, we're, tonight, we're going to do Priority 1.1 and 1.2. There are some additional items in Priority One, we're going to talk about this in September. So three through five will be covered in the September update. So this month, we are specifically talking about 1.1, which is academic achievement and growth at all levels, and 1.2, to ensure special populations are monitored and enhanced. You can see some more specific action items under these. We're not going to go through each of those specifically, so much as we're going to talk generally about what are we doing to ensure that all of our students are experiencing academic growth, including our special populations. So I want to start us off with just how do we know, how do we monitor achievement and growth? I know this question has come up frequently, as we've talked about student achievement scores in lots of different ways. And so I wanted to kind of give you this overview of how we look at this. So three different ways primarily, how we look at growth. The first one being formative assessments, which you're going to hear a lot about in this presentation. The next being standards-based assessments. That would be what you probably remember in school of like an old-school unit test, where you take the test at the end and be able to show what you know. So these are based on the standards that should have been taught in a particular unit, so that we know if students mastered what they needed to there. And then we have summative assessments. What is important to remember about summative assessments is they are, an assessment is summative when a student no longer has an opportunity to improve anymore in that area. And so that's why we look at STAR as a summative assessment. Someone took their fourth-grade reading star, and they're done, they're not going to get another shot at that. So summative assessments really don't inform our instruction as much as some of these other types of assessments. The graphic that I have here for you on this side is specifically about formative assessment, and that's what I want to focus on today. So if you start at the little starred section near the top, a teacher plans learning targets and envisions proficiency. So what do my kids need to learn? And what is it going to look like whenever they've learned it? How will I know? And then the teacher will design formative assessment practices to get evidence. So what am I going to look for? What questions am I going to ask my students? What activities are they going to do that are going to show me that they have mastered the skill? And then, once they've done that, I'm going to interpret it. I'm going to look at each one of my kids individually and decide, did this student master the skill based on the evidence that I have? At that point, then, feedback is provided to the student. Maybe it's, yeah, you got this, like, we're moving on to the next thing, good for you. Maybe it's, hey, I noticed a little misunderstanding we have here, so come over and let's talk about that a little bit more. But feedback is provided to the student to ensure that we've adjusted our instruction to meet their needs. And then the last little bullet there is adjusting current learning goals and establishing new learning goals. Once we've mastered something, then what's the next thing that we're going to move on to? And so this process is very cyclical, and this is really the best way for us to have assessment that informs our instruction, so that we know that all students are learning at high levels. For us, this comes down to the use of professional learning communities. So professional learning communities really are based on formative assessment above all else. And you may recall that last year, we had, each of our campuses had what we call a guiding coalition, a sort of leadership group, that came to several days of training in the fall semester to learn how we can implement these learning communities on our campuses and ensure that all of our teachers are equipped to go through that process. How do I know when my kids are learning, and what am I going to do about it? We actually updated our assessment framework over the summer. We have a document that just talks about all the assessments that we give in the district and what their purpose is and what information we get from them. And we updated that to reflect the four questions that exist as part of PLC. This is foundational of the PLC process, and that is, what do we want our students to learn? How will we know that they've learned it? How will we respond when some students don't learn it? And how can we extend and enrich whenever students have already gained proficiency? You can tell this fits with that formative assessment graphic that you saw in the previous slide. This is the work that we're doing every day in our classrooms with PLCs. So I actually took this excerpt from the Teaching and Learning Management Plan, which is a foundational part of our scorecard document, really is implementing this management plan, because I wanted us to be able to share the roles of all of the people in making sure that our students are learning. Okay, so we're all in this together, you're going to hear me say that again. So we'll start with just our district leaders. District leaders, and that would be myself, that would be anyone at the district level, certainly our Teaching and Learning Department. Our job is to design and provide professional development on effective, purposeful formative assessment, to make sure our teachers really understand what that is, and to provide expectations in the use of that formative assessment, to make sure that we're monitoring student progress very regularly. And then establishing a clear system of grading expectations and guidelines, which we do, we have a grading guideline document that is shared with all of our campuses. Next, we have here our campus leaders, and that would be our campus principals and other administrators on the campus. They have an important role in this work as well, making sure that they're providing training on the use of ongoing formative assessments, monitoring the implementation of those district expectations. Remember, our expectation is that we are looking at data weekly, essentially. And so the principals are there on the campuses, ensuring that that's happening, establishing campus expectations and procedures and the use of formative assessments, and knowing that those assessments impact what we're doing. It's one thing to have an assessment, it's another to say, what am I going to do as a result of this? And so that is an important role of the principal, to make sure that our teachers and all of our staff on campuses are doing those things. Supporting our instructional coaches and coaching teachers, and so making sure our instructional coaches are on board and supporting this work, and then leading those collaborative conversations and teacher data meetings. Our principals, and I will say, we have such a great group of principals, and they're good at this, of being in the conversation. It shouldn't be, teachers, go have a conversation about data and like, I'll see what's done when you're done. It's, let's talk about it, let's look at it together and all be informed. And so that's an important role that they play as we're looking at data. Next here, I have instructional coaches. Our campuses each have instructional coaches on campus, and those people are responsible for providing training and modeling the use of formative assessments. So not only do we want to train, we want to have people on campus who can show you how to do it, who can walk you side-by-side through different ways that you can formatively assess students and how you can use that data. That second bullet there is really coaching teachers and the effective use, like, how are we going to use the data to make sure that it is changing our instruction in ways that help our students be successful? And then modeling how to use formative assessment data for individual student strengths. And I think this is really important, and it speaks to Priority 1.2, which is about ensuring that all of our student groups are being monitored. That's really about looking at individual students. All means all, we want to make sure that all of our students are learning and growing. And then we get to classroom teachers, who are responsible for developing and using those formative assessments, checking for understanding to see what students have learned and what needs they have, giving feedback and re-engaging students whenever they have areas of need, and then really using those assessments to determine strengths and areas of need, so we can design learning experiences that meet the needs of all of our students. We know that not every student is the same, and they might need a little something different, and we can use this formative assessment to determine what they need and know that we are determined to get them there. I also included, and this is in our Teaching and Learning Plan as well, special programs and intervention staff. So our campuses do have staff members whose role is to intervene if we have students who are falling behind or have learning gaps. And then we have special program staff, so that might be special education, it might be bilingual. Anybody else on the campus is there to provide support and modeling on really effectively adjusting instruction. I think about when we have specific needs, for example, with our English language learners, we have specific research-based strategies that can support. we have specific research-based strategies that can support them. And so we have special services staff that can support that. And again, with providing good feedback, good feedback makes all the difference. If a kid can understand what it is that they need to do differently, then that's going to help them move in the right direction. And using those formative assessment results to determine strengths and areas of need. So as you can see, everybody has a role in this priority one, making sure that all students are learning at high levels. And we have really done a lot of work to delineate who is doing what. So everybody knows they have a job and everybody knows what their role is to be sure that we're working together for all students. Back to our question of monitoring achievement and growth, we do have several ways that we do monitor that. We use a combination of a lot of data points. That would be NWEA, BAP, STAR, those common unit assessments that I spoke of previously, formative assessments and teacher expertise. I have to pause and just really make sure that we remember to give credit and credence to that teacher expertise. Because the STAR test tells us one thing, that a teacher in a classroom can look at a kid and work with them and know whether or not they're learning what they need to learn. And we should have great respect for that and make sure that we're empowering them to act upon all of the data that they're acquiring, even that anecdotal data that teachers are getting in the classroom. We will have beginning of year MAP data very soon. That window actually opens next week. We will look at that as our current reality. Where are our students right now? And what do we need to do to make sure that they achieve at least one year's growth over the course of the next year? And just I've listed here the areas in which we give the NWEA MAP assessment. Primarily reading that and science. State accountability is another way that we know we are measured by the public, but also a way that we can be reflective on our practices and make sure that we are working toward growth and showing improvement with our students. That is measured in three domains, student achievement, academic growth and relative performance, and closing the gaps. So hot off the presses, this was just released last week for 2024 and 2025. And so as a district, I'm going to share with you just those those domain scores and the overall scores for Elgin ISD and talk about the impact that that has on the work that we're doing. So in domain one for student achievement, it measures how well students are doing on the STAR test. And then for high school, it actually includes graduation rates and whether or not students are prepared for college career or military. And I have to note here that the CCMR college career military data is actually a year behind whenever it's included in the accountability data. It just adds a complication, but nonetheless, we're responsible for it. So and in domain one here, you can see from 2024 to 2025, the district improved by three points. Domain two actually has two components, academic growth and relative performance. This looks at whether students are improving from year to year. And then it does a comparison between our schools with schools that have similar student populations or similar demographics. And you can see here, this is a quite a large increase we're proud of. In domain two, we went from sixty-two to sixty-seven in 2025. So we saw an increase of five points. Domain three focuses on closing the gaps. This is the area where we ensure that we are making, we are monitoring the growth of all students. So this looks at students from different races or ethnicities, low income, special education, English learners, making sure that no small group of students is being left behind, that we're really looking at all of them and make sure that all kids are learning, not just some. And you can see that we did improve by four points in this particular domain from twenty-four to twenty-five. So overall, the score is calculated with seventy percent from the better of domain one or domain two. For us, that was domain two was our growth and thirty percent from domain three, which is closing the gaps. So you can see here, our overall score in 2024 was sixty-one and in 2025 is sixty-six. So I have two things to say about this that seem a little bit conflicting, but I'm going to say them anyway. So do we want to and will and are working harder to be better than the sixty-six? We believe that we're doing the work to make that happen. And so we're very motivated to not be satisfied with that number. However, the immense amount of work and learning that has gone into a five percentage point increase in one year is quite impressive, and it is a testament to the work of our principals and our teachers and the work that's been done on campus. So we will stop and celebrate that great growth of five percent, and we will know that we're not done, that we're continuing to move forward. Priority one point two, again, talks specifically about special populations and making sure that we're monitoring those. And you can kind of see this, I worried about it being too small, but this is actually something that comes from the state accountability system in closing the gaps. So I mentioned to you that that particular measure ensures that we are looking at all student groups and we are provided with this information regarding the student groups that you can see listed down the side here. So there are a lot of calculations that go into the different columns. The one that I think is is quite maybe perhaps most important for us to look at are those two columns under growth rate. What we want to see is consistent growth rate among all of our student groups. And this is a way that we can look at it, who like at what percentage are our students growing? We want that percentage to be high and we want it to be consistent among all of the groups. So this is just one reporter, one way that we ensure that we're looking at at closing the gaps between student groups, no matter what their demographic background is. I don't want to click too fast, but I'll go back to it if I need to. So just in summary, formative assessment really is the best way to monitor and enhance learning for all of our students. And we have invested time and energy and money and training to make sure that we're getting really good at that because we know that's what's going to move our students forward. Beginning of year MAP data will be collected beginning next week. And that will be our current reality, our place to start so that we know we're moving forward from there. Following our formative assessment processes is going to allow us to make instructional adjustments. So it's both things are important that we have formative assessment and that we adjust our instruction as a result of it. And that is really our focus for the year. And just that reminder that all students deserve to learn at high levels, and that reflects back to our compelling purpose. That's how they're going to have choice and opportunity for the future is if we make sure that they learn what they need to when they're in our schools. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I would just like to take this opportunity to thank our teachers and our principals for all the hard work that you're doing. I am pleased to see that there are some measurements going on and that it is encouraging to our staff as well. Thank you.
And I will say the same, you know. It's the first time we've had accountability ratings released in a long time, and we've gone through a lot with it and lawsuits. And there's a reason for those lawsuits, but those were dismissed and nothing realized through that. But we know that the system itself is one that we have zero control over, that we utilize the data to help us do better for kids always, and we know we will do better always. And we're already seeing that. And I'm just encouraged. I'm encouraged by it, and I'm certainly encouraged by the work on the campuses and at the district level, guys, the support of our district staff. Thank you so much because we we couldn't do this in any capacity without all of it. We're holding this together. I keep saying that, and it's absolutely true. But seeing the growth across the board and seeing five percentage points of growth through the school district is remarkable. It really is. And we're just going to continue to see that move forward and that trajectory is a path where we're going to continue and see more. So thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hickman.
And we absolutely all are invested in this, so everybody in this room. And so we appreciate this is reset, the information that I mentioned. We ask a tough question for a reason, because we want great results and we see us moving forward. So thank you. Next item, priority for update on construction projects including the 2021 and 2024 bond, Serene Lane, Executive Director, Brian Prince.
Good evening, President Mitchell, Board of Trustees, Dr. Ritter. I'm excited to show you another presentation for the many projects we've got across the district. Excuse me. Once again, it has been a very busy summer, so we've got a lot of projects ahead. I'll jump right into the high school project as you'll see tonight. Honestly, some projects are a little smoother than others. This one, as you all know, this has been our auditorium project, we're winding down the high school work from our 2021 bond at the high school. This is obviously work on an active campus, on occupied site, on a renovation project. So sometimes we run into challenges. That's just the way some of these projects go. So I know some of us were a little disappointed that we didn't get to have communication in here, but as Dr. Ritter mentioned, we will have communication in this facility next year. But you can see here, we are, we are moved in with furniture. We've got all of our furnishings in, curtains are in. Our contractors worked with our consultants to create a punch list throughout the facility, which really just means they're putting the finishing touches on the facility across the board from from top to bottom. In this facility, as I've mentioned previously, there are a lot of intricate systems with the lighting and the sound and the curtains, the stage, the rigging. All of those things have to be commissioned and gone through from top to bottom. So that's the process we're working through now, just putting some finishing touches on all those things. But we really do want to make sure we focus on on quality as we get this project finished out before we get our staff and kids in here, and this will be a nice project once we're in. This is a project a lot of you have seen. This will probably be the last last time we show this, but Trinity Ranch Elementary, for those of you that didn't get to see it, Dr. Ritter showed the groundbreaking. That was a really great ceremony. We had a lot of great turnout for that. But it is exciting to be able to take photos at the conclusion of a project like this when we get to see teachers put their own personal touches on the classrooms, you know, to see this come full circle from, you know, from groundbreaking to where we're finding finally getting into the furniture and then to see the teachers excitement as they come in and begin to put posters and decorations on the wall. That's really what it's all about. So these are the pictures I really enjoy taking. And then, of course, we've got some of the common areas there in the library circulation desk. We'll have kiddos in there and then that PLC room for so our staff get in there to put those conversations together to make sure our kids are on the right track. So again, this was an exciting project and very well put together. So appreciate all the effort from Dr. Martinez and his team over the past few weeks as we continue to finish out a few loose ends on that on that campus. Transportation facility, this is a project that's been kind of waiting in the wings for quite a while. But as you can see, we've begun making some progress over the past couple of weeks, and they've moved very, very quickly. So utility installation is moving forward, and then there's a lot of paving and concrete work. If you recall, this is a really pretty small building, but there's a lot of site work and paving. This will be phase one of two. Phase one is here in the twenty-one bond. And phase two is slated to take place out of the twenty-four bond. So a lot of this paving for the buses has already taken place. Got a little bit left, and then you can see some of our quality control there in that bottom left that's just concrete samples. You know, a lot of folks ask, how do we make sure things are done right? Well, this is just an example of that. I thought I'd throw in there to see, let you all know one one process that we take to make sure everything is done properly. But as we look forward to groundbreaking for for this facility this Thursday, you all get a chance to see this, but I know our bus drivers and our transportation folks are really excited about this facility finally coming together with a targeted opening of next spring. Priority maintenance projects, we've done a lot of smaller projects across multiple campuses this summer. Some of them are a little bit further along, but we did get flooring replacements going at multiple locations. Nighting Elementary, you see in the middle picture there at the bottom, that was one of the areas that we did get completed in a classroom. Because of a late delivery from a manufacturer, we have looked to schedule some of the flooring throughout Nighting. A little bit further in the fall semester, as well as the high school foyer, we'll work with campus administration to schedule that. Water heater replacements at Nighting and High School, those are completed now. Roofing repairs were made at BTW, window coverings for Elgin Elementary classrooms. Those are on order, so we'll get those scheduled. They should be able to take care of those on evening or a weekend. There is a temporary arc sink there at Elgin Elementary, you can see. While it's functional, there are permanent sink, which will be a little bit larger stainless steel sink. That will come in and be installed again on an evening or a weekend, but it's nice for the art class to have that functional sink now and not have to haul water back and forth. And then Elgin Elementary flooring in the restroom is taken care of as well. Do have a little bit of work on the base to finish, but certainly usable in the meantime. Making some progress on our fiber optic project across the district. We have made some progress with the underground conduit across Swenson Lane. They're south of two ninety. Fiber has been ran to Booker T. Washington with interior terminations in the building. And we continue to work with text. My original intent was to cross two ninety overhead with an aerial crossing. But it looks like right now the plan is to go under. So we'll we'll resubmit to text dot with a bore under two ninety. So that put us behind a little bit, getting a permanent connection to Trinity Ranch Elementary. But nevertheless, that project is still moving forward. Our contractor has some work he can do in the meantime. While we continue to navigate the permitting woes with text dot. HVAC right now hot button issue, you know, it's still hundred degrees outside. So I'm glad to see that the work is primarily completed in Elgin Elementary. Those AC units in that back hall, we were started up just in the nick of time. Elgin High School and the field house is where these units are at, those units are running. There are a couple of areas that we still are seeing hotspots across the district, and we're still working with our contractors to respond, get areas addressed each time that we get calls come in for those. Our own team, our consultants and our contractors are still working to get those mitigated and taken care of. We appreciate the principals being patient with us as we continue to to push on our contractors to respond in a timely manner. And we will get those resolved as soon as we can. But overall, we're glad to see a lot of new equipment in the district. We had some really aging equipment. Fieldhouse, for example, those were original units from nineteen ninety-nine on that campus or on that building. So it's it's good to get some of this equipment replaced and ultimately have better quality equipment for the for the campus. Cafeteria serving lines, this was at Elgin Elementary and Elgin Middle School. Both of these projects also finished just in the nick of time, but you can see on the bottom left there the serving line door there at Elgin Elementary. This serving line was previously just open. It didn't have a door that rolled down to necessarily blocked it off. Some of their fixtures actually came out into the cafeteria. So this gives them a little bit more of a a secure way to to close up at the end of the evening. And then an interior view for Elgin Middle School, they were able to able to add a fourth line into there to give them a little more more capacity to run those students through there a little bit faster. Moving on to twenty-four bond, this will probably be the last month that we show renderings on here with the approval tonight in consent agenda for the award of GMP one. I appreciate that. We'll mobilize with site work pretty quickly, and you should be able to see images of site work in the coming weeks. So take a look at these. These may, these may change slightly. These are just renderings, as I said, but site work will begin quickly over the next few weeks, and we'll be able to see where things really moving out on this site. But but here we see what the library potentially look like. Colors may change slightly, but the we think this is fairly accurate. And then this is what we call a learning neighborhood. There are three of these based on the three grades that will be in this facility. This will be the entry to one of those areas within the building. So where we are moving forward, as I said, with that GMP one, that's really for the site work utilities, concrete foundation, the work outside the building. Contractor is ready to mobilize nearly immediately, so potentially late this week, they could be on site. And then next month, we'll come back with guaranteed maximum price number two. That will be the remainder of the project, all the interior work and the rest of the facility. And then we will continue to work with text dot and TCEQ. That's the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality for our site septic permit. And then ultimately, we are still planning for a June twenty twenty-seven completion date. On athletic improvements, this is a project you all approved last month. What we've been doing over the past few weeks is working with the contractor to finalize all of the alternates that were proposed last last month. Not all projects have a list of alternates like this. So we were very fortunate that the bids came in very competitively, and we were able to spend time selecting alternates for this project. And also since then, product samples have been submitted to the district purview. We we sat down with Jen Zanderson and made sure that we're getting the turf that the teams needed and wanted. All of those things have been evaluated, and actually I got the contract today for signature. So we'll be ready to give this project to start here very quickly, still with a targeted completion of spring baseball and softball season. So project is still on track and we're ready to get started here quickly, but we are very fortunate that'll be able to include all the alternates that we had anticipated. Studio E adjacent to this, this project will begin bidding soon under the construction manager. Studio E adjacent to this, this project will begin bidding soon under the Construction Manager at Risk, Bartlett Cock. We anticipate coming back to the board in October with a guaranteed maximum price, all inclusive for everything needed in this project. It'll just be one guaranteed maximum price. This include the broadcast and film studio, AV production, podcasting rooms there in the press block itself. Then on the outside, a new video scoreboard and sound system for the stadium facility itself. Here you can see a few renderings of what the facility potentially look like. Of course, they're inside the space and on the outside as well. The homestead, we are moving forward with this facility. We'll start weekly meetings to keep this project on, on schedule with design. One of our goals will be to get to tentative construction in December. With the approval tonight, we'll have Construction Manager at Risk on board with George General Contractors. We already have had pre-development meetings with City of Elgin. Those were successful meetings, we think we've got everything in line that the city will ask for there. But ultimately, this will be a fast track project if we get construction going in December. We'd have about seven to eight months worth of construction with a tentative schedule showing completion in August of 2026. Mainly, this would be an interior project, there'd be very little done outside the facility, at least on this phase. But we could return in subsequent phases and do some interior or some exterior rather improvements to the overall campus. And then facilities projects, the DAP portables just south of where we're at tonight. If you all remember, a couple of months ago, we did talk about initial delay, getting permanent power to the site from Encore. Our, our folks continued to work through that, but it did delay the overall project a little bit. So we're a few weeks from completion on this. We've worked with campus staff to make sure that they have positions at the existing DAP campus at the high school to keep students at. Unfortunately, right now enrollment's low, so they're in a good spot to let us continue this work. And then over a school holiday, we'll be able to shift furniture and get things moved in for them. But work will continue on this project over the next few weeks and then we'll work with the campus staff to, to make that transition. We do still need to pull fiber from Elgin Elementary and then get some interior work finished out. But if you've driven past here, you'll see some asphalt striping and a couple of new stop signs that do help with traffic flow, make it a little bit safer navigating that, that blind corner there near the track. Any, any questions about any of the projects?
I guess my question is, is August, August is almost over and baseball and softball started January. Y'all feel like y'all can get those fields?
We do, we, we've stayed in constant communication with, with Field Turf, the general contractor. They're, they're a manufacturer under Tarkett, which is the global manufacturer, and they're still comfortable with the schedule. They think they can, they can get that done. No, some of the alternates included things like replacing the small press boxes and those types of things. The, the turf is the, is the main thing that has the lead time, the, the smaller things didn't have such a lead time. But the turf, since they are manufacturer, they, they're comfortable with that. The, the small, the fencing, those types of things didn't have a lead time, so we're, we're less concerned about those. But we've continued to stay engaged with them throughout this process and we're still comfortable with that date.
I guess what is, what is the alternate plan?
I mean, if we get to a point for
I mean, it can start right in September, October.
Yeah, I mean, for whatever reason, if, if we were to have to delay signing the contract or for whatever reason, you know, we would, we would have to look at alternative options. But I mean, right now, we would still move forward, I guess. Yeah, if it came a monsoon in November, I mean, that's, that's something we would have to look at. We would have to talk to Coach Anderson and, and see what the options are. But right now, there's still enough padding in that schedule for them to complete the project. Yes, sir.
On the, on Trinity Ranch, do we have an amount of people that, that walk to school?
I, I don't, I don't have that data currently, no, sir.
You may not know, but it's something, something just for thought, you know. The reason I asked for that is do we have a structured path to be able to walk to Trinity Ranch? I know it's a distance from a lot of the other places, but I don't know if there's any kids that are left out, study bus routes. You know, that they have to walk. Now that's something that we may want to look into.
Sure. Yeah, we can, Dr. Martinez may have that information already, but if not, we can certainly get that information to you.
Yeah, that's just a concern, yes, sir.
We do have a lot of walkers, yes, and bike riders, right? Yeah, and but great sidewalk structure from the neighborhood throughout. Crossing guard, do you have a crossing guard in place? Yes, two, used to, yeah. Can see, I'm in my classes. Okay, thank you. While I have the mic. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who's had a part in getting these projects moving forward for this 2024 bond. It's really exciting. We're about to see all of it really moving forward and it's gone very smoothly up to this point. So we certainly appreciate Bartlett Cock, the city of our, you know, everyone, DLR, Huckabee, our architects, everyone who's had a part in moving this forward. And a lot of people are in the audience tonight, and so I wanted to say thank you. We appreciate you.
Any other comments, questions from the board? I don't know why you sat down. And next item to consider approval of campus name for middle school number two.
Yes, good evening again, you know, as we, as we start off a project, it is exciting to, to select a name for a school. And as we have with the past few campuses, the name that we're proposing tonight has a relevance to the, to the school site. Tonight, we're proposing Legacy Oak Middle School. This particular site, for those of you that are familiar with the location, it's a, it's a very rural site. While it's mostly prairie grass, there are some, some trees on the site. But there is a very notable large oak tree on the site, very, very special to the, to the former owners and, and us, the design team, the contractors, we've taken a look at it as well. It's got two distinctly individual trunks that intertwine several feet above the ground, becoming one tree. So it is quite unique and arborists have looked at it and agreed that it is very uncommon. But, but based on that, that kind of became a theme for the project, that and the prairie itself. So that lent the design team to use a certain color palette and material selection for the overall project. And based on that, we proposed the list of oak and prairie themed names that the board reviewed and sorted through and ultimately voted on that, that landed on Legacy Oak Middle School. So tonight, that's what we're proposing is Legacy Oak Middle School. That does align with one of the categories in Policy CW Local that references geographical areas or names related to the site. So that'll be our proposition tonight.
As a recommendation, Mr. Rainey. Is there motion in Edward Garn, the name of the second middle school, that's Legacy Oak Middle School?
Awesome move.
That's the by Mr. Miles. Our second bit. Any other questions? All in favor, set motion, raise your hand. Any opposers? Motion passes 7-0, thank you, sir. All right, next item, we're being asked to approve the 2025-26 tax rate adoption, Mr. Clark Motley, Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening, Mr. Pres, Mr. President, Dr. Ritter, members of the board. I'm Clark Motley, Elgin ISD's Chief Financial Officer, and I'm very pleased tonight to bring you Elgin ISD's tax rate adoption for the year 25-26. So a tax hearing was held on June 24th and because the tax rate being presented for adoption tonight isn't an increase, there is no need for another hearing. The tax rate to be adopted is 1.2234, which is the same rate Elgin ISD adopted in 24-25 and is tied for the lowest in over 20 years. This rate is made up of a maintenance and operations tax rate of .7552 and an interest and sinking rate of .4682. The maintenance and operation rate consists of the maximum compressed rate assigned by TEA of .6169 and tier two pennies of .1383. Calculations must be done to determine a tax rate that would generate the same revenue that was generated in the previous year. This rate is 1.1471, which is lower than the rate we are presenting of 1.2234. The rate's lower because property values have increased, so even though we are assessing the same tax rate as last year, we are generating more revenue. Because this year's tax rate will exceed the calculated no new revenue tax rate, specific wording must be used in the motion to recognize the increase in revenues realized. And even though our tax rate will be the same as last year and is the tied for the lowest in over 20 years, a motion to increase our rate must be made. Any questions?
Any question? If not, I'm moved that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 1.2234, which is effectively a 7% increase in the tax rate.
My second.
Second by Mr. Baker, any other questions? All in favor, set motion, please raise your hand. Any opposers? Motion passes 7-0, thank you. Next item, being asked to approve the amended budget for 2025-26.
Good evening, once again, Clark Motley, I didn't sit down, I stayed up. Tonight, I'm bringing you the proposed budget amendment for 2025-26. So I, I just have to say, when I was courted for this job, they told me, you'll start July 1st, the budget will all be wrapped up by then. Well, here we are, August 18th, and we're still working on it. So I just wanted to say thank you to the board and, and everyone up here for walking this walk with us. It's been a unique year with legislative changes and new laws, so we are, we are very grateful to you guys. Not, not that any other year, we shouldn't put all of our focus and attention on it, but this year, I think we've had seven board workshops for budget. So we appreciate all of you guys for your attentiveness to that. Just so you know, we, we approved tonight the three funds, the general fund, debt service fund and child nutrition fund. That's according to section 44 of the Texas Education Code requiring boards to adopt those funds. All other funds have specific purposes and are not required to have a budget adopted. The budget must be proposed by June 19th and adopted by June 30th, which is why we did approve a budget on June 24th of 2025, and this was prior to adjusting for compensation. So this is our current budget, the one that we will be asking to amend tonight. Our general fund revenues were 69.1 million and then expenditures of 70.7 million. That left us with a deficit fund balance of, or deficit in our budget of 1.6 million. Food service is 6.2 million and expenditures are also 6.2 million, so that's a balanced budget there. And then in the debt service fund, we have 16.7 million with expenditures of 16.5 million, leaving us with a surplus of 237,000. To make sure that we have funds to make the payments as revenues will start coming in. So this was again adopted in June, on June 24th, prior to adjusting for compensation, and we did increase that. So here is the budget that we are asking to be amended. So some good news, when we brought to you guys the compensation increases, we did expect the deficit to increase to 1.838. But our actual is coming in at 1.805, which is about a $33,000 reduction from what we projected, which we are pretty pleased about. Our child nutrition remains the same numbers there, 6.2 million, and that is also a balanced budget. And then for debt service, there were some changes with $828,000 being moved from local revenue to state revenue due to the legislative changes. But there's no change in the overall amounts, so we still have that surplus of 237,000 to make sure we can make the payment before revenues start rolling in. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? And he's been asking to approve the amended budget for 2025-26.
Still move.
Motion by Mr. Miles. Second by Mr. Barker, questions? All in favor of said motion, raise your hand. Any opposers? Motion passes 7-0, thank you, sir. It is 8. It is 8:25 PM and the board will recess into closed session and reconvene as allowed on the section 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code to discuss purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property, Texas Government Code 551.072. Also to discuss personnel matters, Texas Government Code 551.074. A, the superintendent mid-year formative evaluation. Should any final action, final decision or final vote be required in the opinion of the school board with regard to any matters considered in such closed executive session or meeting? Then the final action, final decision or vote should be either in the open meeting covered by the notice upon reconvening of the public meeting or at a subsequent meeting of the school board upon notice thereof, as the school board shall return. It is 10:05 PM, the board will reconvene into open meeting at this time. During the closed meeting, only the items that appeared on the agenda were discussed. The final action, the final decision or vote was taken during the closed meeting. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Miles, second by Mr. Baker, all in favor respond to aye.
Aye.
No opposers, it is 10:05 PM, we are adjourned.